I'll call the meeting to order. Before we begin, let me read the emergency evacuation procedures. In the event of an emergency evacuation, an alarm may sound. Everyone should exit the building by way of the nearest stairwell in a safe and effective manner. If the nearest stairwell is blocked by smoke, use the other stairwell. Do not use the elevator. Once you've reached the main floor, follow the exit signs to exit the building and quickly proceed away from the building. Please be mindful of others evacuating and of emergency vehicles. With that out of the way, we have minutes from the special call meeting, which was the replacement meeting for February. Do we have any additions or corrections to the minutes of the March 12 meeting? If not, do I have a motion to approve? We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, like sign, motion carries. We have on the agenda tonight a public hearing and possible action on amendment of the subdivision regulations, section 6.04, clarifying the setback requirements for various classification of public roads and private roads and common driveway easements. There was a omission in the publication of this, the announcement of the public hearing. The data was not available on the internet as was published. So we're going to be resetting that public hearing, but if there was anybody here tonight that wanted to speak to that public hearing, I will recognize you and we will make notes of your comments. But there will be another published public hearing for the amendment of the subdivision regulations, section 6.04. Is there anybody that came tonight specifically to speak to that public hearing issue? If not, please watch while we'll... Do we all want to go ahead and set that public hearing? Go ahead, John.
Well, you could. The next date that would accommodate the 30 days notice is May 28th, the regular meeting on May 28th. So if you could set the public hearing on that date at the beginning of the planning commission meeting, that would be appropriate.
Okay. Do we need that in a form of a motion? Do I have a motion to reset the public hearing for the amendment of the subdivision regulations, section 6.04, for May 28th? That'll be our next standard meeting. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. And actually, before I jumped into that public hearing, it should have... We've got one item to add to the agenda tonight under site plans. This item got in late, but because of the nature of the site plan, the applicant has asked that we move as quickly as possible on it. So can I have a motion to add the site plan for Camp Montvale Pool House to the agenda tonight? That'll be the second item under site plans. Do I have a second? We have a motion and a second to add site plan for Camp Montvale Pool House to the agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. First item then under site plans is site plan for SASE at 2475 Stock Creek Boulevard. Roger.
This is site plan for 21,408 square feet addition to the existing industrial building for the SASE at 2475 Stock Creek Boulevard. The property is identified on tax map 9 parcel 2707 and is zoned I for industrial. This project will disturb about 1.6 acres and increase the impervious area by 0.71 acres. The applicant has provided me with a copy of the SWIP that has been applied for the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation and the required drainage plan with supporting calculations. I've reviewed this plan with Justin Teague and will be making a site visit prior to the meeting. Did include the support information through your packet and will report any issues or not any issues with what's out there. If there are any... On paper, everything appears to meet the requirements and are supported by technical data. The site plan does indicate that all required building setbacks will be met by the proposed addition. There will be 33 additional parking spaces added, bringing the total to 41 spaces, which will be within the range required for this use. The sign that is indicated on the site plan is already onsite. No buffering will be required for this location. In accordance to section 7.15c, the structure is within a commercial development, is not subject to the requirements found in this section, but I have included the elevation views for your review and they will have... They have actually been reviewed by the industrial board and approved at this point. The site plan does not indicate any additional outdoor lighting except for five wall packs, three emergency lights and nine down door lights, which are recessed up under the awnings. And I've got the technical data for the wall packs, which put out 419 lumens and they only project six feet from the building. So it's just lighting the immediate area around the building.
Thank you, Roger. Any questions or comments from the commission?
Just out of clarification, the 50% minimum building materials that are non-metal requirement, when you have the expansion as this is, the expansion has to conform to that, correct?
In this case, it doesn't because it's actually within an industrial development.
I guess what I'm saying is it's not a grandfather. If they chose not to do that, would they have the option or the right to expand and not conform with that?
You don't have that requirement in an industrial park.
Yeah, that requirement is for areas outside of a commercial development.
Outside of industrial.
Or outside of industrial development.
What am I reading on number three? On page three, on number three, says exterior walls visible from public road shall be constructed at least 50% non-metal building materials.
That would be applicable to RAC on 411, but not within the industrial parks themselves.
Okay. Yeah, it says there in C, it says to mitigate the impact of building appearances along scenic highways and other existing roads within the county exterior to commercial developments, the following design requirements shall apply. And then you've got the four requirements down below that.
That satisfy your question? Did you want to speak to the...
I'm Will Robinson, 131 Brentwood Drive, Oak Ridge. I'm the civil engineer on this project. So if you've got any questions, I just want to know I'm here.
Commissioner McClellan.
Notice that's pretty steep driveway coming in there. I guess Justin has approved all the drainage and everything with this.
Well, he's looked over it with me. He doesn't have any authority because that's outside of this, outside of the urbanized area that he has authority in, but he has looked at it with me and didn't have any problems with it.
The driveway's, it's existing and it is kind of steep and now we're parking off of it and that's not ideal, but they need the parking, so.
No kitchen, vice versa.
We're not far from Stock Creek. Compared to what's out there, it's not a real significant increase. We're directing some of the roof water to the existing pond that's to the west of us and the calculations really don't really support a pond for this property.
Commissioner McClellan, do you have anything else? No, you turned your light off. I just want to make sure you were satisfied. I have a question for the commission and Roger. The stormwater study that was included. This is a question to commission members. Are you all, all of you interested in reading this document? As I went through it and looked at all the technical terms, Roger, I expect you to read it and understand it and give us recommendations, but in just in terms of saving paper, I'm not sure that this technical detail... I don't want to deprive anybody of the technical detail that is in there, but I mean, we've got colored graph. That's an expense to me that is not justified unless somebody on the commission wants it. And if you want it, tell Roger that you want it and we'll include it in your packets. But if you... Is everybody kind of in agreement with what I'm saying? If you are, then we'll kind of make it a policy that technical studies that we're not, that the layman's not going to understand probably do not need to be included.
I can do that in the future. If one of you want it, I'll be happy to email it to you.
Okay. We'll just take that as kind of an operating procedure.
So taken.
Any other questions or issues with the site plan? Not a motion is in order? A motion, do I have a second? Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. Duly noted. Site plan is approved as presented. Thank you, Roger. Site plan for Camp Montvale Pool House.
This site plan is for a pool house to be at 4901 Montvale Road. The property is identified on tax map 114 parcel 12.02 and is zoned R2. This property houses Camp Montvale, which is an existing non-conforming use predating our zoning regulations. The applicant would like, wanted this to go before you guys tonight. They're trying to get the pool house finished for this season so they can open the pool for their campers. The site, the state requires the pool house in order to do so. The addition being proposed is a small 23 by 21 foot pool house. In accordance to section 6.1 of our zoning regulations, a site plan is to be reviewed by the planning commission to determine if there is adequate space for a proposed expansion. In this case, the proposed structure is over 1,500 feet to the closest property line and is located on a large heavily wooded parcel. The applicant used the GIS map to illustrate the location and distances from the property lines in hopes that it will satisfy site plan requirements since it's only being reviewed for area requirements. They've also included the building plans and elevation views for your review. If approved, a building permit and septic permit will be required and they did include with their packet a copy of the soils map for that immediate area.
Do we have any questions or comments?
I may be wrong on this, but I believe they, it's a recently installed pool and they're wanting to open it this season.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Any further discussion? There's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. Site plan is approved. Roger, thank you.
Thank you.
Preliminary Platte's major subdivision, Stephanie's View subdivision off of Gregory Road by M. Burn Builders LLC. Doug?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Stephanie's View subdivision is on Gregory Road. It is by M. Burn Builders LLC. There are 13 lots. Nine of the lots have road frontage and four of the lots are served off of two private easements, which you can see on the Platte item B1. I'm going to read the outstanding items to be completed and then I'll address any questions you have. They begin on page four of the staff memo. Number one, the project engineers to specify tile sizes along Gregory Road for all lots and for the common driveways. In addition, the project engineers to certify if a stormwater pollution prevention plan permit from the state of Tennessee is required. Number two, pre-construction meeting prior to any additional site work. All instructions in the staff analysis for the construction of the common driveways, paving of the entrance, construction of all utility and drainage improvements. Number three, supply a copy of the maintenance agreement to staff for review. I'll take any questions if you have them.
Any questions or comments? Commissioner McClellan.
Is lot one potentially going to be required to use the easement that goes part of eight for their driveway? Reason I'm asking is, is there any site distance around that curve for lot one's driveway?
There's not a site distance consideration. If you want to add that to the common driveway, that's fine. We do typically do that to limit driveways on a lot of roads, but this is a local road and it doesn't appear to be a problem if they have an individual driveway there.
Commissioner Allen?
So I understood that correctly. You're wanting to make lot one only be accessible by the private drive, not by the road frontage?
I'm not. I was just curious if there was a site distance problem though.
I think from Doug's comments, it does not appear to be an issue. They could use it if they choose to, but unless there's a reason, we wouldn't restrict it.
I don't think it needs to be restricted. If you want to, it'll actually have to be noted on the Platte.
Right. Commissioner Hadrick?
Yes, sir. I have visited the site and there's no site distance issues in this corner of minutes.
Any other comments or questions? Do I have a motion?
I'm making a motion to grant the 50,000 dollar requirement applying to this by addition to the schedule.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. There's no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. Renewal of preliminary Platte for Sparks Cabin sites off of Christie Lane in Laurel Valley. Doug?
Item, excuse me, item two begins on page five. This is a renewal of preliminary Platte. There are five new lots and one existing tract, which is the Lane property. You can see the Lane property if you look at the Platte. It's labeled B2. If you look at the five very strangely designed lots behind them, you'll see the Lane property. That one's accessed off the easement. All of the lots are going to be served off of the internal roads in Laurel Valley as well. This Platte originally came to us in March of 2010. It was renewed for two years. It got renewed again for one year and then a second year, and this is the third. That's not atypical. The owners had some health issues. There was a holdup with, one of the cabins had been tossed into the driveway by a tornado and they've since removed it. I wanted to report that since that was a big deal last year, but it has been removed and put back on its foundation. Everything else seems in order and is the same as it has been approved in the past. I will read the outstanding items to be completed into the record. I hate to bore you with this, but there are six items. Number one is a variance consideration to allow for the five Spark slots in the Lane property to be divided off a common driveway easement, and that variance was granted by the planning commission in March of 2010. Copy of a maintenance agreement for the common driveway, shared septic system and common area maintenance responsibility, suitable arrangements for maintenance of the private water distribution system. And if we need to go over all this again, if you want to discuss it, I'll explain it. Number three, property owner's association documentation to be supplied to staff for review prior to final Platte submission. This is inclusive of maintenance responsibility for these lots for the internal Laurel Valley roads, and we have worked with the lawyer for Laurel Valley and they are satisfied with the conditions of the Platte. Number four, a pre-construction meeting is required prior to any onsite work, which would be the paving of the entrance, an erosion control plan and any permits to staff if they are necessary, all instructions in the staff analysis for construction of the common driveway and paving of the entrance. Number five, confirmation by Mr. Lane that he concurs with the division of the Sparks property and understands the limitations from additional lots off the common driveway easement in the future. Mr. Lane did confirm that in March of 2010. Number six, add access easement for common area below, shared septic easement on the Platte and specify on the Platte that common area may also be used for future wells. And I think we actually, I have talked to Glenn, the surveyor, he's here, if you have any questions for him, but we have since made those modifications to this Platte. I just didn't have it handy to put in the packet.
Okay. Questions or comments? Commissioner French.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's been about five years since Mr. Lane agreed to these conditions. Is he still the owner of the property?
He was last year. I didn't check with him this year.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner McClellan.
This is going to be a maximum of five and we aren't going to permit any, like on the opposite side of the road at some time to come back and try to put a cabin over there, are we?
No, this is, I mean, it would have to go back to the planning commission for another variance.
So we're asking for only five right now?
Yes.
We have a motion to renew the preliminary Platte. Second? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. Preliminary Platte is renewed. Thank you, Doug. Renewal of revised preliminary Platte of the overlook at Montvale off of Happy Valley Road by Harmony Property Group. Doug?
Item three begins on page six. The preliminary Platte indicates 76 lots to be served by new paved private roads containing 50-foot private road easements with reserved common area. The revised preliminary Platte for the overlook at Montvale was reapproved at the May 2013 regular meeting for a period of 24 months. It is now expiring. The owner is requesting renewal of the preliminary Platte for 12 months until March of 2016. I believe the original preliminary dates back to, is it 2006, Guy? Seven, maybe?
Yeah, probably seven.
Yeah, and the original, the first... Oh, I have a phase two amended final Platte was approved in July of 2008. I just want to give you some timeframe. This subdivision began around 2007 or '06 and it's not really changed much. They have put all the roads in. They are in place currently. There's still some conditions that need to be met and I'll read those into the record here in a minute. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them when I get finished. The outstanding items to be completed begin on page 14. There are nine of them. And this is for preliminary consideration. Number one, the owner's engineering company shall supply planning staff with a written road completion plan to complete the private road paving and make fixes as noted in the staff analysis. They never topped the road. They did a baby binder, which is, which was agreed to in 2007 by the planning commission as acceptable and the highway department, even though it was a private road, stated that if they sealed it right, it would be okay. If they topped it within just a couple of years, which was their intention, the topping never occurred because there's absolutely no houses in this development at all. But the top coat that they put on it, the sealant, is, you know, all but gone now. So there has been six years or seven years of deterioration on the road and it is showing. So they will have to do some work on it for, you know, final Platte, for the final phase. Number two, renewal of state stormwater permits by the owner as required by the state of Tennessee. Number three, the owner is to supply an updated erosion control plan as per section 5.012H of the subdivision regulations. It is for the owner's responsibility to comply with section 7.019 for all site improvements regarding seating, matting, ditching, sorry, seating, matting, ditch treatments and other measures to reestablish vegetative cover on all disturbed areas. This will become active once a revised preliminary Platte is approved and erosion control measures will be in effect. Number four, owner and engineer to schedule a new pre-construction meeting with staff prior to any future onsite work with road completion plan, state permits if applicable and revised erosion control plan. Excuse me. Number five, completion of the topping course of asphalt for all internal road sections in addition to installing concrete curbing at the entrance medians and fixing collateral damage as per the highway department prior to final Platte. And that's in the event that they pave the topping and do any additional damage to the county roads. Number six, final drainage and road certification letters upon completion of all road and drainage construction, and this is prior to a final Platte. Number seven, environmental health department requirements and field review fees for the review of the new lot configuration. Did you guys take care of that last time, Guy?
What was the question?
I'm sorry, environmental health department requirements for field review fees for the new lot configuration for the redesigned lots that you redesigned in 2013?
No, I was talking to Phase 2B, so that has to go through line.
Yeah, you'll just have to work that out with Gary.
Gary, you can wait. We need that. You still have to angel the Phase 2B line.
Right. Number eight, addendum and possible amendment to the POA documentation to be supplied to staff for review. Number nine, the installation of all road signs, painting and reflectors prior to final Platte. And I will answer any questions you have and Guy is here as well, if you have any questions for him.
Any questions or comments?
Excuse me, Mr. Grant. What guidance on item one, what guidance are we giving to them about what's going to be acceptable when they come back for the final Platte approval on that road?
It needs to be topped with one inch of topping. I mean, it's the standard. We're following the same standard that we originally applied. And I believe it's written in your staff right up as well.
Have any other comments, questions? Do I have a motion? I have a motion and do I have a second? Motion and a second to approve the renewal of the preliminary Platte. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Doug?
Is that... Subject to the outstanding items?
Subject, yes. We have a motion and a second to approve the extension of the preliminary plat subject to staff recommendations. Nine items. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Preliminary and final plats, Donnie Amburn Senior property off of Elmer Lambert Road and John Noah Myers Road. Doug?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We only have seven more items. The Donnie Amburn Senior property off Elmer Lambert Road and John Noah Myers Road, there are two lots with county road frontage and the remainder is greater than five acres. The outstanding items to be completed are on the bottom of the same page. Number fifteen, page fifteen, I'm sorry, there are two items. Number one is to add a note on the plat regarding the well easement for lot number one. If you look to the left of lot number one, you'll see the well is actually load painted on the remainder. Number two, signature plats including environmental health department certification pending final review and a $20 per lot plating fee. That's all I have.
Commissioner French. Any comments, questions?
I'm just curious why this couldn't have been done as administrated?
It's three lots, two lots in the remainder.
With the remainder thirty-nine acre.
It's still three, yeah. Staff only can approve in-house one lot into two, not one lot into three.
Any questions, comments? I have a motion.
A motion to approve.
We have a motion, Bruce, you're the second. We have a motion and a second to approve the preliminary and final for the Donnie Amburn Senior property off of Elmer Lambert Road and John Noah Myers Road, subject to completion of three outstanding items. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Final plat for lot sixty-four of the overlook at Montvale and replat of one lot along Abrams View Trail privately by Harmony Property Group. Doug?
Yeah, that is actually just one item, there's only lot sixty-four. Now that the preliminary plat has been reapproved, if you look at item E2 in your packet, the actual plat, I've included two E2s. One is the one approved on the original final plat for phase one of the overlook, which was approved in September of 2007 and recorded. If you'll look at lot sixty-four, it was actually labeled common area lodge and cottage. That's actually the title on the plat, lodge and cottage, and the intention at the time was to build a lodge with a cottage for the entire neighborhood for a variety of reasons that was going to go along with the common area and some of the other things they were going to do. At this point, the owner is actually requesting to change that lot from the status and take it out of the common area, and they're going to use it as a residential lot. And the reason they want to do it up in the front is because it actually sits about parallel with the gate and people can actually see it, since there has been absolutely no activity like I mentioned last time. You know, we don't have, the planning commission has no restriction against that whatsoever, but we did ask that they give us some legal opinion on changing their own restrictions that they previously recorded, and we did get an opinion back from the attorney, and I made my comments in there about that. We don't have any reservations, we don't interpret what they say or, you know, change what they say, we just accept it or not. You know, I found the language that the, you know, with the letter from the attorney seems to indicate that changing the use is not a problem for the developers since there's been no home construction in there. Having said that, I will just read the outstanding item to be completed, which is only one on page seventeen, and that is a signature plats including a $20 plating fee.
Any questions? Commissioner McClellan?
Does the paving thing, item you read in the previous, apply to this lot too?
I don't, I don't think so because phase one, phase one final plat was approved without the topping being done originally. And this is part of that phase one, they're just changing the use of an existing lot and making it just a tiny bit bigger.
We have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Doug?
Thank you, Guy.
Replat of lot twelve of the Amburn Builders LLC property off of Peach Orchard Road.
There's some history to this, there's actually two common driveways side by side. One is called Zach's Lane and the other one is Sue's Way. Lot three, four, five, six, and seven are all off of Zach's Lane. Lot eleven, I'm sorry, I'll do that the other way, lot eight, nine, ten, and eleven are all off of Sue's Way. I think lot two and lot number three on the road actually have access to Sue's Way as well on the previously recorded plat. Where you see lot twelve R1 and twelve R2, that's actually a remainder. It is actually attached all the way to Peach Orchard Road with that area that's hatched, and it has a hook across going over to the Sarah Teefdeller property. The intention is to divide the remainder, which would be the two lots in the back, twelve R1 and R2, off of Sue's Way and cut that hatch section off and sell it to Sarah Teefdeller. That's my understanding. When, and if that gets approved, that indicates a variance to the subdivision regulations adding an additional lot to the common driveway, which would be Sue's Way. I don't have any reservations about it, especially, I did write about it in there. Zach's Lane actually crosses that little hatched area if you look, and goes to the Tommy, sorry, Thomas Larry Hughes property, which is, which is up there by twelve and twelve, twelve-one and twelve-two. They could put a driveway in from twelve R1, and it would cross Zach's Lane and then go through that hatch section all the way down to Peach Orchard. But that's a low, wet area, and part of the reason they never put a road or driveway in it in the first place is because it is so low and wet. It's not a flood plain, but it is just a low, wet area, and probably not a real good idea to put a driveway in it or add another one. And then you'd have the problem of having an intersection on two gravel driveways, which would only lead to confusion. So, having said that, I think the intent of the plat, you know, is consistent with the original design, and it's probably, well, I'll leave it up to the planning commission to decide if you want to grant the variance. I will just read into the record on page nineteen, the four outstanding items to be completed. One is the consideration of the variance request by the planning commission to the number of lots on the common driveway easement. Number two is the electric and water utilities shall certify the final plat that all electric improvements are fully installed to each lot or assured as posted to the utility prior to releasing the final plat. Number three, supply a copy of an addendum to the maintenance agreement to staff for review. And number four, signature plats and a $20 per lot plating fee.
Any questions or comments? I've been out there and looked at that plat myself, and I agree with what you've said, Doug, the, that hatched area is basically a swampland, it is, and to fill it or try and use it.
Better off leaving it alone.
Would be more, more of a detriment than it would be a positive. Does everybody understand the variance? So we're increasing the allowance of number of lots on private, on a private drive to accommodate the configuration of the land that we're dealing with. We have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor of approving the plat as presented, including the variance request for number of lots off of a private, off of a common driveway? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Doug. Resubdivision of lot thirteen Lindsay Estate by Amburn Builders off of Lanier Road.
Yeah, there are three lots, all of them have road frontage. One lot is a flag lot, thirteen R3. The other two have direct frontage on Lanier Road. Site distance and location is fine. I don't have any particular considerations, I will just read the outstanding item to be completed on page twenty, there's only one. Signature plats including environmental health department certification pending final review and a $20 per lot plating fee.
I have a motion, do I have a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Doug, I'm beginning to sound like an auctioneer up here.
What's that?
I said I'm beginning to feel and sound like an auctioneer up here. We haven't seen this many plats in...
It's been a while.
How many months or years? Sloan and Martin property off of Rocky Branch Road to Nebo Road.
Yeah, there are, this is item five, it begins on page twenty. There are three lots, all have county road frontage. If you look at the plat with me real quick, lots, lot three is actually going to be served by an easement across lot one off Nebo Road. We did add some notes to the plat that lot three is not to have any driveway access off of Rocky Branch, and lot two is not to have any additional driveways since there's actually one already there of longstanding. The outstanding items to be completed are number one, add a note on the plat restricting lot two from any additional driveway locations along Rocky Branch Road, and number two, signature plats including environmental health department certification pending final review and a $20 per lot plating fee.
Motion to approve? We have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And a second. Any questions?
Subject to conditions.
Outstanding items to be completed. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Subdivision of the G dash M properties off of Highway 411 South by Houston Murphy.
Yeah, there's, there's one lot in the remainder, greater than five acres, there's actually a variance request to the required road frontage. The subdivision regulations require that lots along a primary arterial which 411 South is have four hundred feet of road frontage. We can reduce them down to two hundred feet if they have either shared access or...
Well, it's an access that doesn't require any additional driveways, which the commercial drive would allow, but there are actually existing two driveway entrances into that property, so you'd have a variance not only of the minimum width of the lot along 411, but the number of driveways, just recognizing that there's already an existing situation.
And that variance would be from four hundred feet down to three hundred and sixty-two And all, everything else you see on the property is actually still on one tract of land. The outstanding items to be completed are on page twenty-three. Number one is the consideration of the variance request by the planning commission to the minimum road frontage along a major arterial. Number two is a maintenance agreement for the use of the shared driveway easement, which I now have. And number three, signature plats including environmental health department certification pending final review and a $20 plating fee.
Question? Commissioner McClellan?
Motion to approve, subject to the conditions.
Aye.
We have a motion to approve, subject to outstanding items to be completed, and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Who's handling the proposed Robert Hayes Road closure?
Yeah, item one miscellaneous, page twenty-three, is the proposed Hobart Hayes Road closure request by Joseph Gugliotta. If you look at the very last page of the plats I gave you, there's a, there's an aerial photograph, and the Gugliotta property is outlined in yellow. It's actually at the end of Hobart Hayes Road, which is a, which is a local road, county road, it's fairly narrow, maybe ten or twelve feet wide. The circled area is the part that actually rests within the entirety of Mr. Gugliotta's property. There's actually a gate up, but the owner's requesting that section be closed, and he's supplied a letter to the Blount County Highway Department with that request, and attached on the page before it is a letter from Jeff Hatcher, the engineering director for the Blount County Highway Department, and their recommendation to close that section, it's actually two hundred and eighty feet at the end of Hobart Hayes Road. And the way I put it, let's see here, says the highway superintendent has recommended for the abandonment of this section of Hobart Hayes Road. Staff concurs with the highway department's comments in the attached letter and recommends that the planning commission make a recommendation to the Blount County Board of Commissioners to abandon the two hundred and eighty-foot section of road and right-of-way at the end of Hobart Hayes Road.
Commissioner, questions and comments? Commissioner McClellan?
That parcel to the north there, that's got a little flag out there, is that, has that got access from some other road?
I don't know that I understand what...
The parcel to the north there, has it got access from somewhere else, or are you cutting his access out from that road?
Yeah, I believe it has access to the road. You're talking, I think you're talking about this.
From another road?
Yeah.
Or are you cutting his access out of that Hobart Hayes?
Well, I mean, that circle is probably just a little bigger. Is Mr. Gugliotta here?
Yes.
That, that property in front of yours there, they're not, they're not cut off from the county road, are they?
If he comes towards my property, we're right.
Yes.
Then he has access to my gate.
Your gate's behind it, yeah. I'm sorry, it just doesn't show up well on the drawing.
So, so...
Actually, the parcel behind it.
So right, you're saying from right there, actually?
Yeah.
Okay.
You access it from here?
Yeah, like the gate's probably more like, you know, back in here, like, yeah, right there.
Okay.
The intention of the county department was to use that as a deterrent, so it should, it should be.
Good. Good.
Any other questions or comments? Everybody understand what we're, we're doing? We're basically, we have a so-called county road easement.
Could you, could your recommendation include that the highway department provide a clear indication of where the road will end when it goes to county commission? Because that, that is a little bit confusing.
Motion approved, subject to the clarification.
Okay. Second. All right, we have a motion and a second to recommend to the county commission that two hundred and eighty foot section at the end of Robert Hayes Road be abandoned by the county. And would also request, as the highway department presents to the county, they would make it clear that we are not cutting off any parcels that do, that have access already.
This is Hobart Hayes, not Robert Hayes.
Hobart, I'm sorry. I was looking through the cracks in my bifocals. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
That's enough, Doug.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, that's actually good to see that there is some activity going on out there. Long-range planning. John?
Okay, the previous recommendation of the planning commission of December twenty-second, two thousand and fourteen, on the rural arterial commercial two zone has come back to you by referral from the county commission. I've given you a little history on how that came about. I've also provided you with some video references about the county commission discussion on that. And I, I would suggest that it would be a good idea for you to take a look at those, particularly the public hearing. I also provided you with, in the memo, comments that I've gleaned over more than a year. We actually started talking about this zone in October of two thousand and thirteen. I have sent, I sent to you earlier today a list of videos going back to October two thousand and thirteen, showing the deliberation of the county planning commission on this item and on the rural, commercial in general in the rural areas. I put that on the webpage for anybody that wants to see that. It is on the webpage under the meetings button, just below the notice of this meeting. So if you want to go on and reference all the videos that have occurred on this, I think you'll find that we have had an extensive discussion. And that discussion included six hours of public deliberation in the planning commission and about an hour and twenty minutes or so in the county commission. The comments that I've given you, starting on page two and lasting for, I don't know, a good long, about five pages or four pages after that, are what I've gleaned from all discussions, in particular, the discussion in the county commission, discussion with individual planning commissioners and with the county commissioners and with members of the public, and also the public hearing in particular. So, and I'm not saying that's an exhaustive list, but I think I've picked up quite a bit of the information that was given in public hearing and was given to me in discussions. So I want to put that forward to you as part of the record. Anybody wants to add to that, think that I haven't presented adequately, expressed what you've expressed, then I'd be sure, surely be glad to correct that. This does come to you as a referral back from the county commission. I have no recommendation on how to proceed. I think I've attached also a copy of what was recommended before. I think it's up to you to figure out what you need to do on this. I think the idea from some county commissioners is that there needs to be some changes. They wouldn't have referred it back otherwise. And I think the, the question before you is how much change needs to occur. So I'll leave it at that and I'd like some direction from the planning commission so we can get the process started.
Any comments from the commission in general? Mr. French.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll start. I think in order for us to effectively create a, a zone and, and to take a look at, take a look at all these comments that we've had on, on this RAC, new RAC two zone, is to set up some kind of workshop or something that we can discuss all these and, and come up with a finalized document if we want to create the zone to start off with. I mean, that, that's also an option also. I'm not sure if John put that in here, but, but in, in order to discuss what, what these comments are, I think we need some kind of workshop where not only we need to discuss, but we may also have some public comments at the workshop also. That would be my suggestion.
Thank you, Commissioner French. Commissioner Hedrick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to look at, at an option of, at these intersections that already have commercial use, possibly grandfathering those areas that already are commercial at these intersections. I think that's a, an initial viable option.
Commissioner French, I tend to agree with you. I've had several people from the public contact me. I've received written, written correspondence. It's obvious that the county commission had some significant reservations with the re, or the addition of the zone, so. John, I'd like to schedule, and I'm not sure whether we call it a workshop or roundtable, but let's, or we can call it workshop roundtable. It'll be a workshop for the county commission, but I think it also that we should designate a, that it is open for a public comment and public discussion. And we, as a commission, all that are available sit to eyeball, eyeball to eyeball and see. There's a lot of, and just going through John's collection of comments, it's obvious that there are some misconceptions as to what current regulations allow and what they also restrict. I think that needs, that needs to be clarified. So, John, look at the calendar and let's figure out when we can do a workshop roundtable and we will have it open to the public. And if needs be, I will chair that discussion. Commissioner French, wait a minute, Andy, Commissioner Allen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've been talking, we've been, the planning commission's been talking about this for two years and we really want to go into a workshop right now. Watch, watching that video, and I wasn't present during the agenda meeting. Now, remember, it has passed the planning commission unanimously. It did pass the agenda committee with the county commission once. Then the, the storm happened or the, the snow, so that commission meeting didn't happen, so it had to go back before the agenda committee. And the only reason it didn't pass before the agenda committee at that time was because a member of the commission decided that there was too many intersections that this would affect. I really don't think a workshop's in order here. I've had four to five phone calls, probably ten to twelve letters, and the majority of the, the citizens that called me did not fully read nor did they understand the letter that was written or the ordinance. So in saying that, is there any way we could, there's two issues, you know, we, we could do, I would like to suggest a couple of things. One, we grandfather all of them in, just like Mr. Hedrick said there. Number two, we could limit and we would have to specifically name the intersections if we would want to do that. Or number three, we'd limit all the commercial development to intersection, intersecting properties only and eliminate the five hundred foot rule. I think either one of those two options would be enough change to put it back before the commission, because this cannot come before the commission unless there's, unless there's substantial change now. So they, they voted it back. Now we have to substantially change this zone before it can go back before them. So I proposed those two options and I only proposed them for us to talk about them this evening, to see if either one of those would work to get this back before the commission.
If I could clarify one thing, I think the rules of the county commission are that if it is disapproved, it has to have substantial changes before it can come back. This was just referred to you. So I'm, you know, I think the idea is there definitely needs to be some changes, but I just wanted to clarify that that, I don't think that's a rule of the county commission on a referral.
Thank you, Commissioner Allen. Who was first? Commissioner McClellan?
I need some explanation on this grandfather, because I can only think of about three intersections, one is Spurge's greenhouse and you could only grandfather there's a greenhouse. The other one would be Polly's, what it's called Polly's Corner or something. That's the only two I can think of, except the store used to be at Wildwood Road and, and highway. Where, what, where would we be grandfathering anything?
If I could address that, I think the term, term grandfathering is being very, used very loosely here. Technically, grandfathering is, is related more to a non-conforming use, which has protection under state law and our regulations to continue its existence and function and to expand on the property within the boundaries of the property itself. So I think we need to realize that we're not talking about the non-conforming use type. I think the idea there is that if you already have a nucleus of commercial use at an intersection already, you can build on that nucleus. So you can, and, and, you know, re, make that one to where it can change uses and also expand to maybe the other side of the road, something like that. Is that what, okay. That's what I understood it to be. Is that? Okay. I, I kind of interpreted Mr. French's comments from the public meetings in the county commission the same way. Just the terminology is being used very loosely and can confuse the issue.
Commissioner French?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, and that's exactly what I had in mind is that where there is commercial use already, that, that, that those intersections be allowed. And this is why I think we need some discussion, because I, your proposal, Mr. Hatcher, and, and I think we can limit it to either major and minor arterial collector roads at those intersections. I think we, that's why I think we need to probably discuss this with the caveat that we don't drag this thing out like we did the campsite proposal. I think we can accomplish this in one session. There are other factors that I think need to be included, such as the size of, of the, the size of the building that, that we're looking at. That's, I mean, that, ten thousand square feet, I, we've got some questions about the size of that, whether that's too large and maybe we need to minimize that. You did mention the five hundred foot, but, but I think we need some discussion before we do that, but I think we can do it in one meeting and get, and narrow this down and get, I don't want to postpone this six months, but I would like to get a, a, a document that will be supported by the commission and without any, any further referring back to our, to the planning commission. I think that's why we do need a workshop to discuss all the, all the changes that may need to come. That's my opinion.
Commissioner Hodge?
I, I want to agree with Commissioner Allen. I, I look at this list, the comments, and I, I take all these in consideration of every decision that I personally make every meeting we have. And I think that I can say for myself and probably everybody here for the last two years that we have taken these in consideration. And I would not be in support of a workshop. I'd like to see it go forward as it was written or with the amendment of the grandfathering of the intersections.
Commissioner Hedrick?
I agree with Mr. Hodge, Mr. Allen. I, I don't think the, the workshop is, is in order. We're continuing again what we did with campgrounds, dragging it out. The grandfathering situation, it's, the commercial's already there. It's, it's worked at that area. I think we need to move on.
John?
I, I'd, I'd like to offer the planning department service similar to what we did for campgrounds. If there are defined points that need to be changed, I can come back with alternatives on those defined points. I think the list of comments gives you a basis for identifying some of those defined points. And I can come back with alternatives to changing the existing framework of the recommendation. And then you can make your, your choices from that or add to it or modify it at your will, because it will be your recommendation. I do think that there was, there was plenty of sentiment in the county commission and I've heard it here tonight also, to have the public input. You could actually have that tonight if you wanted to invite the public to speak, but to have an input session at a regular meeting. If you don't want to have a workshop, have a regular meeting and start thrashing it out directly. But from an, from a list of items that can be considered and then come to determination on that list, takes any advice from the public on what else needed to be added to the list to consider. And I think you might, could get that through within about two, possibly three months. Two at the outside, because even if you had the meeting next month and came to a conclusion, I would have to come back to you with actual wording changes to the, to the resolution and before you could recommend it on to the county commission. So April and May or April, May and June, I think that's a reasonable time period. If you think you've got a, a limited set of, of points that you need to change, if it is going to be open to, to a general discussion and reconsideration, then I, I think a workshop might actually work. But I would be willing to come back to you next month with a set of proposals and alternatives for you to consider. And I would suggest you also have at least a formal input session from the public at the same meeting.
Commissioner Hedrick?
I'm sorry.
All right. I'm not going to open it up to public input tonight, because I don't think we've properly alerted the public. John, I would request that you do what you just said. Make recommendations or come back with tweaks that you know are hot buttons. And we, we will schedule a public input discussion or input at that, at that meeting and plan for it and publicize it as such. Commissioner Allen?
I'd like to make a recommendation that we do open to the public tonight and then take it for motions afterwards.
Well, we can take input, but I, I feel.
This was a, this was a public, it was publicly, publicized meeting, right?
I know, but I'd also told people we wouldn't be taking action on this tonight. I mean, just off the, that it was being reported back to us. But we can take input, but I think we still need to take input next, next meeting.
I'm, I'm sorry, you told people we were not taking action on this tonight? I, I'm confused.
I said, in just informal discussions, I said it was being reported back to us and that I did not anticipate that we would make, be making modifications to it tonight and that it wasn't scheduled as a major public input. Commissioner French?
I believe once, once we make changes, we, we need to set a public hearing on it. Is that not correct, John?
The planning commission doesn't have to set a public hearing on a change of the zoning text only for a rezoning of a piece of land. You, you do have that option and that's why I was suggesting, suggesting at the next meeting, you have a time set aside for public input on this item.
That's, that's what I'm trying to do is, is not drag it out like forever. I, I think we can accomplish what we need to do within two months, I believe, if we have public input. We create the, the document at the next meeting with the changes that, that are proposed and with John coming back with his proposed. And then we create the document there and then send it forward to the county commission. And that should take care of it.
Are you talking about actually sending a recommendation at the next meeting?
From the next meeting, yes.
Okay.
From the next meeting. Sending those recommendations forward.
Okay. That assumes a lot of clarity in changing of wording, which sometimes, well, I'll leave that up to the planning commission. You've got to be clear, clear in what you're changing and wording, and it's best to have that before you. I'll give you alternatives and you can pick and choose, but if there's any wordsmithing going on, I just caution you that that, that sometimes needs another consideration at a clearer meeting.
All right. Commissioner Allen, I understand what you're trying to do. You're trying to keep it moving forward. But I, to take, we do not have any proposed changes. And to not allow public input.
I understand that you proposed changes.
Right. I understand, but we have nothing in writing. And I don't even understand what the grandfathering is. As John has already said to us, existing commercial is grandfathered by definition, whether we do anything with it or not. My hesitation is until John has done some wordsmithing, I don't think we have, we have five pages of public input here. We cannot, I mean, other than going through this list and I can say this is not a valid concern. So, I'm not trying to cut out public input on it. I'm trying to make it, the public input meaningful. And I understand that that slows down the process. That's where I'm coming from. Commissioner Hodge?
Since it wasn't disapproved, does that make us as of now not have the ability to send it back at this point?
You always have an option to send it back, and we've done that, I think, once before, but that's futile if you've already got an indication from the county commission. I mean, if you send it back the way it is now, I think that would be futile. I think you need to process it and do some changes. And quite frankly, there were some very valid comments that, that once I, once people pointed it out to me, made sense that there's some changes need to be made to it.
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to know if there is anyone that came tonight to speak to this?
That's, I can open the floor if anybody wants to add.
If that's okay with everyone else, I'd like to hear whatever they have to say.
Anybody want to speak tonight to the issue? John? Mr. Timbleton?
While we're waiting on John, so was the answer, we, if yes or no, that we could send it back with as it was written because it wasn't disapproved?
We could, my understanding is we could send it back. However, if they disapprove it.
No, that's right. He got referred out of the agenda committee.
If you send it back and it goes to the commission and they disapprove it.
Then we would have to make changes.
Then, then we have to rewrite or make some major modifications to it.
We can't make any changes to it tonight to send it back?
We can give John suggestions, but I would not, well, I'm at the mercy of the, of the chairs around here. If you want to make modifications to it and somebody makes a motion that we send it on, I'm, I'm simply here to facilitate your votes. John, let me recognize John and get his.
Thank you, Ed. First of all, I think John's memo summarizing the reaction to this proposal is both helpful and instructive. What I think it shows, and I think the discussion here tonight also shows, is that many of the commissioners do not have a full understanding of this, the grandfather clause being a case in point. There are many issues here. I think there were 48 items on John's list, and about 44, 45 of them were very valid and were counter to a rapid approval of this. They were things that seriously needed to be considered and reconsidered. For example, obviously, we need to consider both the interest of the business community and the community at large, but there are still issues of safety, appearance, size and type of building, types of enterprises allowed, the needed infrastructure upgrades. Think of everything on Chapman Highway, put on Highway 411 North, a four-lane highway compared to a two-lane highway. We're talking about enabling something similar to what we already have in the regular RAC zone, in this RAZ, son of RAC. It really just doesn't work. There are many, very many pregnant questions that need to be addressed and thoughtfully taken care of. The effect on existing homeowners, the convenience, meaning that the, the traffic pattern, the congestion, the, the danger of collision for, from left-turning vehicles, the effect on, the long-range effect on transportation. All of these things need to be further discussed. And I certainly think that although it seems clear that some have an aversion to additional public input, the public input is where democracy starts. And it needs to, if there needs to be further input, I think the desire for haste in this case is misplaced. Thank you.
Gentlemen, I am at your mercy. Commissioner Hodge, do you have some specific recommendations to give to John as to what you would change?
To begin with, that's my point. And I was just asking from a procedural standpoint, but am I under the impression that we need to make a change from procedural standpoint enabled in order to take action?
Just from procedural standpoint, the only requirement of state statutes is that the county commission cannot act until you make a recommendation. You've made a recommendation. It has been sent back to you. You can make the same recommendation again. They can act. They can act either to approve or disapprove or to refer it back to you again. If it's disapproved, then I think the, the rules of the county commission, if I'm not mistaken, is can't come up again within a year until it has, or unless it has some major changes to substantial changes. So, I think you're at the point of substantial changes one way or the other. That was not a narrow marginal vote in the agenda committee. It was 15 people voting to send it back, if I remember correctly. I mean, that, that's not marginal.
But if it passed, the same agenda committee passed the same exact.
That, that's correct. And that was a little narrower vote, but be that as it may, I take the most recent one as the, the intent of the commission.
Commissioner French?
I want, I want to move that we take Mr. Lamb's suggestion and bring this, put it on the agenda for next month's meeting. We change, we make the major changes that we feel need to be changed, add public input to that, and then forward it to the, take the proposed document and forward it to the county commission for approval.
All right, we have that in the form of a motion. Do I have a second? We've got a second.
Do you clarify?
The motion from Commissioner French, as I understand it, and Commissioner French, correct me if I misstate this, is that we are taking John at his suggestion or his proposal that he address issues that he has already identified and is aware of and come back to us with a modified document or multiple options for our consideration at the next meeting. And that that meeting would be also publicized as a public input, public input on this particular subject. Does that summarize the motion?
Yes. Well, let's make sure that he gives us more than one option, recommendation. With, for this specific concern, you can do this or this. For the next specific concern, you might do this or this and give us something to pick from.
John, is that reasonable?
You will always have the option of keeping it the way it is.
Obviously, that's not going to work.
Well, I will, I will give you an option of change, and I might give you more than one option of change.
Yes, yes, yes.
But there might be, it might be so clear that a change is needed that one option is all you need.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Everybody understand the motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call.
Andy Allen?
No.
Brad Bowers?
No.
Sean Carter?
Yes.
Ron French?
Yes.
Geneva Harrison?
Yes.
Jeff Hedrick?
No.
Tom Hodge?
No.
Bruce McClellan?
Yes.
Jerry Roddy?
Yes.
Clifford Walker?
No.
Ed Stuckey?
Yes. The ayes have it. The vote is six, five. John, you have your marching orders. John, do you have anything else in long range? We do have some new business from Mr. Bowers. Do you have anything else? Okay. Brad?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make to a motion that from this point on, the planning commission have in writing on the agenda, place for public input on items on the agenda and also items not on the agenda. And I'd like to make that to a motion.
We have a second. Any discussion or questions? Commissioner French?
I guess the only discussion I have is that we have, as a, as a planning commission, we have a certain purview, and that is items that concern development. And these items are always on the agenda and the public input has input on those items. However, we have no authority or jurisdiction if someone gets up and wants to speak on items off the agenda and they want to discuss why their road is not being paved. That's not in our purview. For why the garbage collection, why that we don't have garbage collection. That, that's not, that's not in our jurisdiction. I think we, we need to limit the items to what we are responsible for.
I just think it would give people an opportunity to voice their concerns, maybe not input on anything specific, but I think people want a platform in which they can speak and talk about what they want to talk about. And I think we, as a planning commission, need to listen to them and give them their three minutes. I don't think we need to just let it go on and on and on. We need to set a time clock. I think if you want to make a point, you can make it in three minutes, but that's just how I kind of feel about.
Commissioner Hodge?
Just as a reference, the city of Maryville's planning commission, that's the first order of businesses. Any input from citizens that items not on the agenda, just FYI.
Anybody else? Comments? Will there be a total, you say three minutes per speaker, but is there a total limit to how long that, that can?
People in the audience, they're each allowed three minutes if they want to speak.
Yeah, I think they ought to be allowed to speak. If there's a hundred wants to speak, they should be allowed to speak.
All right, did we have a second on that?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Commissioner?
If I could get clarification, it would be format that the county commission have where you have items on the agenda first and at the end of the meeting, items not on the agenda, because we do have people sitting in the audience that need to take care of business. And if it's off the agenda, it really would be more efficient for them to take care of business first before you have items off the agenda.
I agree with what John said, yes.
Yeah, I'd like to amend that motion for items on the agenda first, and then items not on the agenda would be at the end of our session.
Everybody understand the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
Aye.
Roll call.
Andy Allen?
Yes.
Brad Bowers?
Yes.
Sean Carter?
Yes.
Ron French?
No.
Geneva Harrison?
Yes.
Jeff Hedrick?
Yes.
Tom Hodge?
Yes.
Bruce McClellan?
No.
Jerry Roddy?
Yes.
Clifford Walker?
Yes.
Ed Stuckey?
Yes. John, Ed, input to the agenda as stated, on items before and off agenda items towards the end, wherever it fits best. Do I have any other points of interest that anyone wants to raise? If not, we are adjourned.